Okay. We'll call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem to order. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kazer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Likewise.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner, excuse me, Chair McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Osick.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll welcome Commissioner Anderson back from his world travels. It's much nicer to see you sitting in your chair than envision you wherever you were while we're looking at you on the card table.
I was in a little hotel room in Boontown, Bhutan, wearing a GHO, which is the national dress of the Bhutanese men.
There we go.
Maybe I'll wear it to the next council meeting.
Well, we can only hope. Yes. Vice Chair Lewis, do we have an approval of any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, seeing none.
Public comment? Do we have any public comment? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move along. Vice Chair Lewis, the consent calendar?
I move acceptance of the consent calendar as submitted.
Moved by Vice Chair Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Hoy to approve the consent calendar as presented. To your motion.
If I may, consent calendar consists of the September 24th Salem Housing Authority minutes. There are two action items, 3.2A, which is the appointment of the Salem Housing Advisory Committee, and 3.2B is collective barding agreement between the Salem Housing Authority and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. And then there is one resolution, and it is the asset capitalization threshold increase.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We've got information report. Andy, you want to have anything to report to us here this evening?
I would, thank you. Just want to remind you of the four properties that we are developing for affordable housing. Yaquena, 52 units. South Fair, 42 units. Fisher Road, 35 units. And of course, a multi rad, which is a whole host of public housing being put together, financed in this altogether as well. And you should be seeing from the third of next, from early '19 to up to, up to the, I'm going to get it.
Middle of the year?
Yes.
There we go.
September.
Yep.
Not September, but middle. And so finances are ready. Have a little working to do with then, but we're really happy and think that the community will use these assets as well. Thank you.
Good. Andy's also, we also wanted to thank the Commission for your patience as we've gotten these projects ready to go, and I think Andy is very confident that they'll start to move much quicker, Yaquena and the Fisher Road specifically.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience as we've assembled those projects, including the financing. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I stated this to you and Private Director Wells, but I'd like to state it in public again, this property management report, as always, is well-written and gives us personalized stories, which is extremely helpful. Usually, it's about people in the programs, but this time it was about what the staff has done to move things forward. And I commend your staff, and I would also ask you to commend whoever writes these reports. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
I would second that. Commissioner Lewis.
I have a question on a different topic.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Andy, there's been some talk about the Hillcrest property. And my, I think, not concern, but interest, is that there is in fact a dormitory-type building sitting there empty, and we have a homeless crisis. So putting those two things together, it makes sense to me. Is it usable? Can we do it from a capacity standpoint? And let's assume for a minute that the state of Oregon just lets us use the building if it's within our ability to use it for homelessness. Comments?
Yes, I do. About three years ago, we went up and looked at the same units that you were talking about. And at that time, we didn't really see the need at that point, three years ago, but the market has changed a lot for a lot of our clients. And so we are having some additional conversations, working with the city and S.H.A. I know that there was a group that went up there, it was DAS, this morning, or this afternoon, to look at it. And I think one issue that's going to be, I think, hard to come over is DAS will probably want to have a single sale. And so unless they're willing to break up some of the pieces, it could be pretty hard to make that work. So, but, you know, if you want to, and, you know, we could work on that along with the city.
I follow up. I don't know if I'm interested in purchasing the property and using that part for homelessness. More interested in using it while it's still vacant or supposedly up for sale. I've been here long enough to know that it took the state and the city quite a while to fill out Mill Creek. The surplus properties the state owns don't necessarily go real rapidly. And I just, and maybe it's naive, but my thought is, why not use the facility temporarily while it's sitting there empty and we have our need? That's the kind of conversation I would.
City Manager has a comment?
Yes, thank you. As Executive Director of the Housing Commissioners, I do want to add to what Andy Welch is saying as far as looking at the Hillcrest property. We have met with the Department of Administrative Services. We can certainly, as we pull together some information for you, we can certainly, as part of that information, include any feasible short-term use. There are challenges as well as opportunities, so the report will include both.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson.
Thanks to Commissioner Lewis for that idea. I would have to say, I've just seen this in the public, and I would be interested at some point just to have a chat with city manager powers and the other powers that be to discuss what could potentially happen with that whole piece of property, including up to whether it would be advantageous or wise for the city to look into see if we might want to purchase it.
Okay. Good points. Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing, I call this meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Salem adjourned.
Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for October 22nd to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Commissioner Kazer.
President.
Commissioner Anderson.
Also.
Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Osick.
Here.
Commissioner Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett. Here. Commissioner McCoy.
I move the approval of the additions to the agenda.
Could you include in that the reordering of the agenda? Just let's just do it all at once.
Oh, okay. And I also, and in the motion, we want to move item 5.0, which is other orders of business, to right before item 4, which is a public hearing. Reordering the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Second. Hoy seconds.
Okay, so the revision to the agenda, where there's some additional supplementing findings from the applicant on item 4C, that's the addition.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Alrighty. It's opportunity for council or a city manager to comment. Commissioner Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish the NESKA Neighborhood Association a happy 45th birthday. It's one of the oldest neighborhood associations in Salem, and I believe it's the only neighborhood association that's represented by three councilors. It's covered by Commissioner Kazer in Ward 1, Commissioner Anderson in Ward 2, and myself in Ward 6. So we all have the pleasure of working with the fine folks over at NESKA, and today is their 45th birthday, so.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Nanki.
Thank you. Wanted to give a shout-out to Salem PD. I think it was Corporal Trevor, non-emergency line. Our car was hit in the Marion Parkade a week ago Saturday while we were in a movie, and someone didn't leave a note that they actually hit our car. We had two eyewitnesses, and that next Sunday morning, we called, and within like an hour and a half, they talked to everyone involved, wanted to know if we wanted to arrest them.
What'd you do?
No. No, it's like, we just want the car fixed and you to take responsibility for it through your insurance. And so it went into the shop today.
Good luck.
Thank you. But yeah, stellar job on the non-emergency line, so.
Commissioner Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share that I'm super happy that Code is here tonight to be recognized, and I just wanted to recognize, within my ward, the excellent work that's been happening with Code. It went out on the communication this week, but it really is such an often overlooked point that contributes so much to our livability, so I wanted to say thank you.
All right, thank you. City Manager?
Yes, a reminder that this Wednesday, October 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Broadway Commons, will be the Town Hall, where there will be an opportunity for councilors and the public to see the results from the 2018 council policy agenda, as well as provide input for your consideration as you're developing your 2019 policy agenda. 6:00 to 8:00, it's a drop-in format, 6:00 to 8:00 this Wednesday at Broadway Commons.
Anything else? Okay, well, we are going to, as Counselor Cook mentioned, we're going to be having a proclamation on National Code Compliance Month. So Patrick Long, the co-compliance supervisor, has brought all the code compliance officers. If you'd come on up here in front, and want to thank you very much. Whereas in 2005, in the wake of Hurricane Katrina, President George W. Bush established October as National Code Compliance Month in acknowledgement of the importance and impact that code enforcement has on communities. And whereas code compliance officers, who are members of the American Association of Code Enforcement, the AACE, provide for the safety, health, and welfare of residents living in communities throughout the United States by enforcing building, zoning, housing, environmental, and property maintenance codes and ordinances. And whereas dedicated and well-trained, using AACE guidelines, City of Salem code compliance officers are highly responsible individuals who are proud of their code compliance department and its proactive efforts to control blight in the city. And whereas code compliance officers have a very intricate, challenging, and demanding job, and one that can profoundly impact the quality of our lives, now therefore, I, Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby call upon all residents to observe October 28th as National Code Compliance Month, and ask that residents recognize the positive impacts made by Salem's code compliance officers, as well as their role as public servants. And that is an understatement on the work these folks do. These are very important to us, so. Patrick, would you like to introduce yourself and your crew?
Yes, I'm Patrick Long. I'm the supervisor for code compliance, and what I'd like to do is just pass mic down and let them introduce themselves and how many years of service they've been providing for City of Salem.
I'm Kristy Wolf, 22 years of service.
Stephanie Weil, 10 years of service.
Garth Fullington, two and a half years.
Colin Armstrong, three years.
Anthony Hinkle, three years.
Deborah Bono, two years.
I am Nelson Morales, almost 15 years, and then four previously with the City of Woodburn.
Suzanne Nelson, 18 years. I'm also the multifamily inspector.
Brent Hedrick in 20 years.
Thank you all very much. We do appreciate this.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. Thank you all very much. I think you all know how important, particularly for the city councilors, you all are for the work you do, working in each of the neighborhoods and each of the wards. So thank you very much. Okay. I have a Veterans Day coming up. I want to invite up Commander Art Cummins from the Salem American Legion Post 136, Commander Deborah Jacobson, Salem American Legion Pioneer Post 149, Quartermaster Carrie Mettallik, sorry, Salem Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 661, and Sharon Blazy, Director of Statewide Veteran Services at the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, and a 14-year Navy veteran. By the way, she also has served on the City Planning Commission and the City Council, so we're really pleased to have Sharon here tonight. Whereas each year, on November 11th, we pause to remember the men and women who through history served bravely and selflessly in America's armed forces, preserving our strength and security as a nation. Whereas on Veterans Day, we commemorate the honorable legacy and sacrifices of our veterans, both those lost and those who thankfully are with us today. And whereas America has been blessed with an abundance of such men and women throughout its history, who courageously battled in world wars, 1 and 2, Korea, Vietnam, and the Middle East. And whereas on this Veterans Day, we salute their bravery and dedication to the defense of our democracy and the sovereignty of freedom-loving nations around the world. And whereas the nation and the free world are eternally grateful for the contributions of American veterans, men and women, and to the advancement of the cause of world peace. Now therefore, I, Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby call upon all residents to observe November 11th, 2018, as Veterans Day, and ask that the holiday be commemorated with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served and are serving to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy dated this 22nd day of October 2018. Thank you so much for your service and for being here with us this evening. Did you want to say anything?
As announced, my name's Art Cummins, and I'm the Commander of Post 136 of the American Legion. I'm an Air Force veteran from the Vietnam era. And I want to suggest and thank all those who are veterans here tonight for your service, and we appreciate it very much. And you're welcome to join the American Legion or the Veterans of Foreign Wars here in Salem and help us with the programs where we're trying to give every veteran who wishes to have a home, a job, the care they need is very, very important, because Oregon is one of the three states that have the most difficulty in serving their veterans. So we're here in Salem trying to find, get them all out from under the bridges, and get them a place to live a full meal during the times when it's really cold, and a place to stay. So if you can help us in any way, we appreciate it. We're tax deductible. It all goes to help our veterans, and I'm one of the lucky ones at my age to still be able to do something. We have a lot of them that can't do anything, and don't drive at night, and have all kinds of problems, and we need to help them, because they were there to help us when we needed them.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Deborah Jacobson. I'm the post commander of Pioneer Post 149. We are the longest-running all-female post in the state of Oregon. I'm also the first vice commander for District 2. I'm also the oratorical chairman for District 2, which is one of our children's programs. We give out large scholarships, and our post, in the past several years, have sponsored three children from the same house. They're all homeschooled, and they've all gone all the way to national, winning. They went to national, but so far, the second boy is the one who's gone the furthest, which was the third child, and we're very proud of that. With me, I brought my first vice commander from the post, Ann Everettz, and Carol Lee, who is also a member of our post. I was an Air Force veteran, I'm an Air Force mother, and an Air Force daughter.
I'm from the Vietnam era. I'm Navy.
I'm during the Cold War. I joined in 1980 and retired in 2000. I joined the United States Marine Corps at the young age of 25. Actually, I was old, because most people were just out of high school. So I was the grandma. But anyway, so I belong to this organization, to the Marine Corps League, which is men and women. I should add to what Deborah says, it's all women, all services. And so then, I also belong to Women Marines, which is all women. And we lost our chapter here in Salem, and the Portland chapter of the Women Marines, they actually have incorporated some in Multnomah County, some in Washington County, and now in Marion County. They moved their meetings around, so it's convenient for people to join and be involved. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chuck, for this honor for our veterans. We have 303,000 veterans living in Oregon, and unfortunately, only about 3 of 10 have sought federal VA services. And so one of the things that we're really trying to work on right now is reaching out to our veterans. Our largest population of veterans right now is our Vietnam-era veterans, and we also know, as it was mentioned, you know, oftentimes, they have some of the most significant challenges. They were not respected when they came home necessarily, and so we want to honor all of our veterans, especially our Vietnam veterans. So thank you so much for this honor for our veterans.
Thank you. Good to see you. Yeah. I'm glad. Counselor McCoy.
We have no public comment?
Oops, we do. I apologize.
Caught me by one.
Yeah, it was like, you want to do the presentations in 1.4.
I was just going to move this right along, I guess. I'm sorry.
It was an interpretive answer, reading.
Yeah. Okay, well, go ahead. You have three minutes to speak. The orange light will come on when you have one minute left. The red light will come on. Please stop when the red light comes on. So we have Ryan Gale.
My name is Ryan Gale. Obviously, as you can see, I am deaf, and I use the services of a sign language interpreter. I work at Western Oregon University in the Office of Disability Services. I'm the coordinator there. I'm also a member of Oregon Disabilities Commission, and also the Telephone Device Accessory Program, T-DAP, on their commission as well. And I am here to ask for support for the captioning policy that is in discussion right now for the City of Salem. Many different cities have started to have policies regarding captioning, and that policy would require any public place to leave the captioning on at all times. Portland was the first city to pass that in all of America, which is a proud thing for Oregonians here. And then after that, San Francisco adopted the same policy. And the City of Rochester now has enacted the same policy. And Maryland. So there are many cities, and this is growing. And this helps not only people with hearing loss, but also that are deaf or hard of hearing, but also those who are older that maybe have some hearing loss as well, that they're not able to understand with the volume. Maybe emergency announcements come up on the television and access is needed. You know, we pay for services, and therefore should have the benefit of joining access through the captioning. The Americans with Disabilities Act law does say that if a person asks for access, that it can be turned on. But often, at the time where you ask for that access, there's a struggle that people running things don't really know how to run it, or use the remote, or get the captioning going. Or another struggle is that stuff is missing, information's missing. So maybe you're watching a sports team, and you're missing that information as well. So it is important for us to have that access here in Salem. It's important that we show that we are one of the best cities as well in all of America and make that known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Eric Martin.
Go ahead. Okay, see the light on. So hi, I'm Eric Martin, the Vice President and General Manager for ATI Cast Products. And first, I want to thank you all for letting me come here and speak tonight. ATI Cast Products is a manufacturer of titanium investment castings for the aerospace industry. So we make components in the Willamette Valley that go to support the significant growing aerospace market, selling
Or another struggle is that stuff is missing, information's missing. So maybe you're watching a sports team and you're missing that information as well. So it is important for us to have that access here in Salem. It's important that we show that we are one of the best cities as well in all of America and make that known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Eric Martin.
Okay, see the light on. So hi, I'm Eric Martin, the Vice President and General Manager for ATI Cast Products. And first, I want to thank you all for letting me come here and speak tonight. ATI Cast Products is a manufacturer of titanium investment castings for the aerospace industry. So we make components in the Willamette Valley that go to support the significant growing aerospace market, selling to companies like Boeing, Airbus, and GE. They're used in the assembly of military and commercial aircraft engines and airframe programs. The facility that we operate here in Salem is a precision machining operation that is also does assembly of those investment castings into components. The facility currently employs approximately 70 people. Many of them are highly skilled machinists and highly skilled in other vocations as well, and trained or grew up here in the Salem or Willamette Valley area. Our investment in the operation is necessary to provide the capacity to meet the substantial aerospace growth that is going on right now and over the next several years to come. The expectation for commercial air travel is expected to go to continue to grow at about a 7% increase over the next five to seven years, and then flatten out at about 3.5%, which represents somewhere around an additional billion travelers every year at that 3.5% rate. So the ramp is here and it continues to grow. We need to continue to add additional capacity. This also upgrades our capability to offer different value-add services to our customers and then continue to grow in the Salem area and the Salem facility as well. The 70 employees that we have today, year-to-date, we've actually added 15 more employees, so over 20% increase in headcount, just in this facility here that we have in Salem. And that is important because that those additional human resources bring opportunities to train and grow as well. We believe the investment in the facility is good for both Cast Products and the city of Salem, and we respectfully ask that the City Council approve Resolution 2018-80, extending property tax abatement benefit for the time period for ATI Cast Products from three years to five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for coming down. I've read this, and I just want to say, in the facts and findings, there are two of them that I think that are very interesting, at least from my perspective. The first one is that you will compensate the new employees at a rate of 150% of the Polk County average wage, which is commendable, and I hope you keep I know you will keep that up after the funding disappears. And also, a first-source hiring agreement for local residents. And both those things are things that I'm sure I and the rest of the council and the people of Salem appreciate. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you. Steve Garber?
I was with.
You're with Eric? Okay.
Good evening. My name is David Viers. I'm have been hard of hearing and/or deafened for many years, involved heavily with the deaf and hard-of-hearing communities here in Oregon. I want to thank Commissioner or Counselor Kizer for having the legislation in Salem that does what we did up there in Portland. I was one of the three people heavily involved with the law that was passed up there. To briefly recap some of the things that we talked about in Portland and hopefully would be applicable to Salem as well, the primary purpose of the ordinance is to allow persons with hearing loss to be able to have similar access to TV as hearing people. This is not just a it's actually a safety feature for us who cannot hear well in that type of an environment where there's a lot of noise. There are secondary benefits to people who use English as a second language, and also even normal people who have difficulty hearing in noisy environments. This ordinance would be in keeping with the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, in particular Title III, that mandates accessibility for people with disabilities. This ordinance, hopefully, if it's written the same way as for Portland, because I have not had an opportunity to see the Salem ordinance, but hopefully, it is not meant to be onerous or punitive towards business, rather, it is meant to be more educational. As an added benefit, this change to have the captioning shown on TVs would be would cost businesses absolutely nothing. All TVs are essentially equipped with that. A number of organizations have supported this type of legislation, the Hearing Loss Association of America, both the State Association and the chapter up there in Portland, and I'm sure down here, they would be also happy to see it, the Oregon Association of Deaf, and it goes on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Nope? Questions? Nope. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Becky Beeman?
I live at 3280 Elderberry Drive South in Salem, and I want to speak briefly on the need for preparations for a catastrophic Cascadia earthquake. I've been taking action on my own personal Cascadia plan, preparing for what might happen if the worst-case earthquake struck the west coast of this country and caused destruction of the infrastructure west of Interstate 5. I have a dog who would not do well in a kennel environment, so I'm preparing to shelter in place in the event of this catastrophe. I have 90 days of food and medications, shelter in the event that my home is uninhabitable. I have a one-week water supply and the means to filter and purify less savory water sources after that. I have a sturdy wagon I can use to carry my water bottles should I need to walk to get water supplies. I'm partnering with a neighbor who has a generator. I will store fuel for the generator. He will recharge my CPAP batteries. I have poop buckets and first-aid supplies and a hand-cranked radio and solar-powered lights and a camp stove to heat my food on. But I am concerned that the city of Salem and the state of Oregon have not sufficiently prepared for this catastrophe. When the 90 days covered by my preparations are up, I will need the city and state to have established some means of resupply. Regular mail service, which will require passable roads and gasoline supplies for mail trucks, a way to get more food and fuel for myself and access to medical care and supplies. But you face a more immediate problem with those in the communities that haven't done much preparation. You have fire stations and hospitals that have, what, three days' worth of fuel for their generators? I'm pretty sure you don't have enough outlets in the halls and waiting areas for all the CPAP users to plug in every night to sleep. And I have batteries I can run my machine off, but most of the people I know are unaware that you can get batteries, which I can afford, but I know others who cannot. So some questions. How many people in Salem use CPAP machines, or are on oxygen concentrators, or have other medical equipment that will need power? And how do you plan to support them with the life-saving electricity they will need? How will you resupply hospitals, dialysis centers, nursing homes, and other-like institutions when they run out of fuel for their generators? How will you support the families of Salem's police force, medical personnel, first responders, and care providers for elderly and disabled persons and other key people, so that they can leave their families in safety and tend to the needs of the Salem community in such a crisis? Who are the most vulnerable in our community, and how will you keep them from dying in the days following the Cascadia earthquake event? There are more questions than I could possibly pose in three minutes, and if we're lucky, a strong FEMA response would move in to help us while the aftershocks are still coming. But the better our planning is before the event, the more we will have to work with if the worst happens. I urge a robust planning effort be started and maintained.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Britta Franz?
I learned from you the literature before. Good evening, my name is Britta Franz. Some of you know I've been here before. I've think I looked it up, and I think my first visit was in 1969, when I spoke something about the Bush Barn and the Art Association. And I've enjoyed my visits, and thank you all. And I know we're short on three minutes, so I'll say it really fast. In my business, you start first when someone comes in and you say, what do you really want to achieve? Don't give me the story. So here's what I want to tell you. I am a big fan of Riverfront Park. I worked with my dad who became mayor from the beginning of the start of Riverfront It was very exciting, let's say the least. And the $2 million that was spent to build Riverfront Park to the way it is today used absolutely no tax money. It was all private money individually, dollar for dollar, child by child, person by person. There were little dabbles here and there, but no tax money in the way that we now look at things. I'm very concerned that the plans for Riverfront Park, which took all summer long, resulted in the actual achievement by the passing of the way it is planned. I'm not here to complain about the park. I'm happy to tell you that I think if you pass it, and the reason I'm here today is to stop the fact that it's on your agenda to discuss deciding and approving the plan the way it is, and it came out of the committee without being assessed properly. So rather than discuss that, let me just tell you what my request is. Do not put it on the next agenda that you actually pass or not pass the plan as it is today. And here is my reason. And my best quickest thing is to have two or three of you, or one or two of you, meet with me. I've tried to talk to several of the staff. The one person I did reach, and we discussed it, I did not talk to you. Everybody's very busy, but he's not here this evening, and he said it was not in his power to interfere. Not Mr. Powers' power to interfere. I like that name for you. So here's what I believe. We are in the midst of a huge impact of population. They are already here. We have built high-rise, three-story apartments all over the perimeter, of which some of us really have to go drive around and pick a map of Salem's parks and go search.
Time's up.
And find them all.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Britta, could you just explain how where people live and the three-story multifamily complexes relate to the parks?
Well, I got in my car just for fun and started driving the perimeter of our community. And this is a map that comes with the city park. There are oodles of them, but I didn't get enough to pass out. But they're in every office here in town, your offices. And this is the inside. And I understand that we have 23 potential parks for which we paid. Right after the Riverfront Park development, we worked hard, in my generation, to buy the land when we still thought we could. Now we own the land. We have incredible rules on how to start fixing these parks. The population, and the vast ones I have found, are in these areas on the very I'm shaking, and I'm sorry about that. That's because I'm unaccustomed as I speak here. But in the perimeters, I located 16 parks, for instance, of which even five, if you put one, two, three, four, five, and actually got them going with the community, not with the rules that we now have.
The question, Britta, really was about the high-rises.
Talk about the high-rises?
Well, that's what Counselor Cook asked.
Oh, excuse me. Again, there are three-story apartments that are limited in space that you can't even take if you're a woman and have a child, that you have to put in a stroller or teach them how to run around and use a bike or a trike. There is no place to play. The city of Salem years ago did not include those rules. Portland and other communities have much, much tighter rules governing how you build mass apartments and how much space you need, open space, for even a little tiny playground. We don't have that. So these buildings are up, you'll find them, all of you behind your houses, behind. Drive six or eight blocks behind, and you will find those apartments are filling up very quickly because the avalanche of people from California after all this bad weather and the fires is upon us. It's here right now, and that does not account for the thousand young people we expect to hire next year. They aren't even here yet, who will not come along. So I believe we're going to have an avalanche of population.
All righty, great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Just to clarify, Britta, I think with your testimony, you're saying that it's really vital that with multifamily and high-density housing, that everyone's afforded an equal opportunity for parks' access and access to green space and nature. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, I believe that developing city downtown park, which is already perfectly usable as it is and has held up fine as it is, cannot be improved enough and doesn't need more people access. We need access in suburbia, the rest of the town and the rest of the city. And besides, we can't access the whole population downtown. There's no room, no parking, and there are some flaws in the plans that I believe will also cause prime problems. So improving all that's going to take too much time. We've got to work on this problem now.
So you would like to see those funds go to neighborhood parks first, other than improving on Riverfront?
Absolutely. We don't have the money to do Riverfront Park, and I believe the individual parks could be developed by the neighborhoods in a much lighter vein than the rules. I would also my second request would be to look at the rules to develop the parks, just temporarily, so people can use them next year.
Thank you very, thank you.
Now.
Thank you, Britta. Thank you. Okay, why don't we move on then to the Consent Calendar?
May I move approval of the Consent Calendar?
Then just go ahead.
Okay, Consent Calendar consists of quite a few items tonight. We've got the minutes of the October 8th City Council meeting. Under Resolutions, we've got a resolution to authorize the City Manager to execute the Salem Enterprise Zone Extended Abatement Agreement to extend the property tax abatement benefit time period for Pacific Cast Technologies/ATI Cast Products from three years to five years. Under Action Items, we've got adoption of the Brown Road Park Master Plan, which Counselor Hoy is very excited about. You can tell. There we go. We've got authorize the City Manager to execute a lease with Glamour LLC for retail space located at 195 Liberty Street Southeast. 33C is to authorize the City Manager to execute a lease with Creative Memory Contemporary Ceramic Studios for renewing a place property where they're at now. We've got 33D to authorize the City Manager to execute the attached amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Dogwood Heights LLC for the acquisition of real property identifies as a portion of two tax lots. Under 33E, we have a purchase and sale agreement with Krishna Bhattare for the purchase of property located at 575 Trade Street Southeast, and a license agreement with Capital Community Television. And in there, we have to update the purchase and sell agreement that's in the packet to record reflect that it's 575 Trade Street Southeast, not 525 Trade Street Southeast. Rolling right along here. Under 33F, we've got order for the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision amending a comprehensive plan, zone change, urban growth, preliminary declaration case 1804 at 4195 Omsville Highway. The staff recommends that the Council adopt the order to amend the decision. Under 33G, we approve submittal of the Public Works Department application for voluntary accreditation through the American Public Works Association. 33H, authorize the City Manager to execute the attached intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Police for access to the automated biometric identification system. 33I is approving an exception to the City Council rules for 33I is approving an exception to the City Council rules for a 6:30 p.m. start time on December 10th, 2018, City Council meeting to accommodate a budget committee meeting from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And finally, 33J is to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the city and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees for a period from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021.
Very good. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, I didn't want to pull it, but I just want to thank the park staff and specifically Park Planner, Rob Romanek, for his outstanding work on the Brown Road Park Master Plan. He did a great job of engaging the community, met in the park, met in the neighborhood many times, and just did a great job engaging the community, and I really appreciate it.
Yeah, great. Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we'll go to public hearings.
We moved five up ahead of those.
Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for council's consideration requiring the use of closed captioning on televisions in areas made available for the public.
Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you, and I just want to speak briefly to this. The idea here is that we prepare an ordinance for consideration and that ordinance would include a requirement for public outreach, which would also include working with businesses and also representatives from the deaf and hard-of-hearing community to craft that ordinance so that we're not leaving those businesses out of the conversation. I met with Ryan Gale, who spoke earlier a few weeks ago, and it quickly became apparent to me that I live a pretty different life by virtue of not being deaf or hard-of-hearing. And I'm privileged in that way. And after meeting with him, it became apparent that something like this would make things just that much more accessible to folks that experience deafness or hard-of-hearing. And television sets that have been manufactured since 1997 have this capability already on them. So it's not putting in a new technology in place or something like that. It's something we already have. It's just a matter of turning it on and placing the captioning. It's really as simple as that. I kind of feel like if we have the capability, we educate people, why not? It feels like it's the right thing to do, so I would appreciate your support for the motion.
Well, thank you, Counselor, for launching this effort. I think we're all real interested in seeing this move forward. Is there any discussion? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I appreciate the motion and I'm going to vote for it. I would... It will depend on what the language of the ordinance is, but there are questions that I have about it. One is the example of a retail store like Best Buy where you go in and there's 25 TVs on one station. We're now going to require all 25 have closed caption rather than one, two, three, or four. Next one, large sports bars which have mass quantities of TVs, many of them showing the same sports. And again, under this ordinance, we'd be required to have all of them have closed caption. I am privileged, I guess, to be able to hear, but when I'm watching TV, especially from a distance and the closed caption is on there, I'm not enjoying the show as much as I would if it wasn't there. And the last thing I want to point out, and I may be wrong on this, but as far as I know, the closed caption is only in English. So this ordinance is going to support those that are hard-of-hearing that speak English. And if we're going to do that, I don't know if that's going far enough. We're supposed to be an inclusive community, and that means multiple languages.
I would just suggest we will debate this when we actually have a resolution to talk about. Right now, we're allowing Counselor Kaser to have this drafted. We're not debating this issue, okay? Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really want to thank you, Counselor Kaser, for bringing this motion forward in our house, where we are very cognizant of screen time and its effect on kids. We have closed caption on in our house to help improve literacy levels for the times that we do have TVs on. So I would say this isn't just an accessibility issue, but also an engagement issue, passively listening. While that's great for audio listeners, it's also good to help with reading skills and people who are English-language learners. So I think there's multiple benefits to this, to just be cognizant of. Thank you.
Counselor McCoy?
Thank you. I too thank Counselor Kaser for bringing this up. I was involved in my previous life in Portland when this, when it first came before the Portland Council. And I will tell you, the only people, and I represented the restaurants and lodging associations, and the only members that got exercised about with this were the sports bars. Because I've got a business model with a lot of different TVs and a lot of different things showing and the sound's not on and, at all. And so we came, became an issue for them. Well, if the sound's not on for them, why should the captioning be on for anybody else? Their folks didn't like it. And we tried to work out some, you know, compromise and didn't quite get there. But I would hope that if we put this together and we're doing outreach, make sure you get some sports bar people in there to get them some feedback and buy-in to make this a lot easier process for everybody involved.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Now we'll go to public hearings.
The City Council will now hold a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 5826 Battle Creek Road Southeast and withdrawal of the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the City Council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. The neighborhood association's limited to five minutes. Other interested parties are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears. Good evening, I'm Olivia Glance, planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight I am presenting a staff report for annexation case C-726 for 5826 Battle Creek Road on behalf of the case manager Pamela Cole. I'd like to enter the staff report, the attachments, and the presentation into the record. The annexation territory is contiguous to the city limits on the north and west. The territory is approximately 11.1 acres and includes approximately a quarter acre of roadway of Battle Creek Road. The territory includes one parcel with a single-family dwelling. The current property owner signed the annexation petition. Because the property is contiguous to the city limits, annexation is required to obtain city services for the future development. The annexation territory is designated developing residential in the comprehensive plan. Adjacent properties are designated developing residential and single-family. Adjacent properties in the city are zoned residential agriculture and single-family residential. The subject property and adjacent properties in the county are zoned urban transition 10 acres minimum, which is consistent with the developing residential comprehensive plan designation. The territory will automatically be zoned single-family residential upon annexation. Under Senate Bill 1573, adopted on March 15, 2016, the proposed annexation may not be referred to the voters because the owner signed the annexation petition and the territory is within the urban growth boundary, subject to the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan and contiguous to the city limits. Although the annexation may not be referred to the voters, council retains the authority on whether to annex the territory. Staff found that the proposed annexation met the criteria, including whether it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, statewide planning goals, allows orderly and efficient, timely provisions for urban services, and serves the public interest. Staff recommends that the council find that the petitioner has signed a valid triple-majority petition determined that the application satisfies the criteria. Adopt Order 2018-08ANX applies the city of Salem's single-family residential zoning and withdraw the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Available for any questions?
Great. We don't have any members of the public signed up. Okay, so I think if you have any questions for staff, you can ask them now. Or Counselor McCoy, do you want to make a motion?
Close the hearing. I move the staff recommendation.
Who seconded? Nanki? Okay. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll go to the next one then. Remind you, this is, we're reopening a hearing. We've been underway on this. This is regarding plastic bags, and we'll just have a brief staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Callie Leinenbach. I'm a management analyst in the Budget Office, and I will be presenting to you this evening as part of the public hearing for the proposed ordinance restricting use of plastic carryout bags. I would like to introduce the staff report and attachments into the record. This began May 14, 2018, when City Council passed a motion directing staff to research and prepare an ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags in Salem. Staff brought back the requested ordinance to council on August 27, 2018, for first reading. On that date, City Council approved conducting a public hearing for the ordinance on September 10, 2018. The initially proposed ordinance is mirrored after the ordinance passed at McMinnville, which has proven to be fair and effective in their community. The purpose of the ordinance is to protect the environment, animals, and human health, and reduce litter and plastic bag waste. The intent is to promote the use of reusable bags in order to reduce the amount of bags in the waste stream and in local waterways. Later in the presentation, I will discuss the recommended changes in the modified ordinance proposal. But first, this is a recap of the initial proposed ordinance presented to council on September 10. The initial ordinance proposed that retail establishments will no longer be allowed to provide plastic carryout bags at checkout to carry away purchases. Retailers may make recyclable paper bags or reusable bags available to customers at the point of sale. The ordinance also does not allow distribution of plastic carryout bags at city facilities or at city events that are held, sponsors, or permitted by the city. Most retailers must charge customers at least five cents per recyclable paper bag and show this charge on the transaction receipt. This charge is referred to as a pass-through fee in the ordinance and is retained by retailers. There are some exemptions for the requirement to charge a pass-through fee and to show this fee on a customer receipt. In the initial proposal, retail establishments with 10 or fewer full-time employees are not required but are still allowed to charge a pass-through fee for recyclable paper bags. If retailers that meet this criteria do charge, the charge does not have to be shown on the transaction receipt. Vendors at farmers markets or holiday fairs are also not required to show the pass-through fee on the transaction receipt. Other exemptions include allowing the distribution of plastic carryout bags for prepared food and takeout food. Also, retail establishments may provide a recyclable or reusable bag at no charge for customers that use, a voucher under the Women, Infants, and Children Program, or an Oregon Trail card or other card to access the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Both the original and modified versions of this ordinance only impact plastic bags to carry away purchases. Many plastic bags would still be allowed, such as bags for the transport of produce, meat, baked goods, and bulk items to the point of sale, product packaging, and other specified items such as bags for potted plants or flowers, or other items where dampness may be a problem, and pharmacy prescriptions. This ordinance would also not impact packages containing multiple plastic bags sold in stores, like bags used for home food storage, garbage, pet waste, or yard debris. At the public hearing on September 10, council expressed the need for additional input on this ordinance, specifically from Salem businesses. Staff prepared a letter inviting local businesses to provide feedback on the ordinance through written comment or by speaking here tonight. The letter was sent to 282 business email addresses and was opened or viewed at least 111 times. Information about the ordinance was also shared on the SED Core and Chamber of Commerce Facebook pages. Information about this ordinance has been communicated in other ways as well. The city has performed outreach efforts, which include publishing news stories about the ordinance on the city of Salem website, which resulted in over 600 visits, and 16 postings on the city's Facebook page, which were viewed over 35,000 times. The Statesman Journal has published four articles, including two editorials, on the city's process and proposal. And on October 21, KATU Channel 2 News provided information about the ordinance and how individuals could provide input. Salem residents have shared their thoughts about this proposed ordinance. So far, the community provided over 100 written comments, which were more in support than in opposition, and dozens of individuals have come to speak before council. Staff also met with council members to gain insight and further policy direction. Through this process, we have heard a variety of perspectives and ideas, which contributed to the modified ordinance proposal for consideration this evening. Based on feedback, an engrossed ordinance was prepared to clarify and streamline certain aspects of the proposal. This proposal includes some minor changes, but is materially the same as the initial proposal. For this presentation, I will focus on the most impactful changes. All of the proposed changes are included in attachments four and five. The phrase "single-use" was removed from the ordinance to recognize that these bags can be used multiple times. The affected bags are now referred to as plastic carryout bags. The exemption for small retailers with 10 or fewer full-time employees and for vendors at farmers markets or holiday fairs was removed. This means all businesses would be required to charge a pass-through fee for a paper bag and show this charge if an itemized receipt is provided. Woven and non-woven polypropylene bags are now included in the definition of reusable bags, replacing the phrase "other nonplastic material." These bags are commonly considered durable and reusable, even though they are made from plastic. In the initial proposal, retail establishments were allowed to provide a free bag to low-income customers. In the modified ordinance, a free carryout option must be provided to low-income customers when they request a bag and show their Oregon Trail card or voucher. Other Scribner error corrections and minor changes were made to enhance reading and provide consistency throughout the ordinance. Staff was able to incorporate some input in the modified ordinance proposal. However, there are other options that we heard through feedback that was not included. These options are open for discussion this evening. Based on the feedback we received, the options listed here are presented to council for further consideration and, if desired, for inclusion in the engrossed ordinance. The options fall into three categories. Expanding or narrowing the type of businesses affected by this ordinance, allowing some plastic carryout bags, and adding requirements or exemptions for the pass-through cost. Options that impact the type of businesses affected are listed here. If the ordinance included food service providers, those establishments would not be allowed to provide plastic carryout bags. This would apply to restaurants, including fast food and food trucks, as well as deli counters. The ordinance could be narrowed to openly apply, to only apply to grocery and convenience stores. This would mean most retailers, such as stores that sold apparel, electronics, personal items, or home goods, would still be allowed to provide plastic carryout bags at the point of sale. As an example, retail establishments that sold both groceries and apparel would bag grocery items in paper or reusable bags, while apparel items could go in a plastic bag. This would be similar to the way prepared food providers are currently considered in the ordinance. We heard about options to allow all or a specific thickness of plastic bags. If all plastic carryout bags were allowed, the bag options would remain the same as they currently are for carrying away purchases, but there would be a fee for both paper and plastic bags. The suggestion we heard most frequently was add a 10-cent pass-through cost for each plastic bag and retain the proposed 5-cent charge for each paper bag. Many other Oregon ordinances define bags with a thickness of 4 mils or greater as reusable bags. If these thick plastic carryout bags were considered reusable, it would give retailers the option to distribute these bags with no pass-through fee or minimum... the option to distribute these bags with no pass-through fee or minimum cost requirement at the point of sale. Pass-through cost options were also addressed frequently in the feedback we received. In the engrossed ordinance, restaurants would not be required to charge a pass-through cost. If council decided they were required to charge a pass-through, it would be shown on an itemized receipt and given, it would be shown on an itemized receipt given by a prepared food provider. If a customer had already paid for their meal and then requested a bag, this would require the food provider to charge 5 cents after the customer paid their bill. This scenario could make it difficult for the restaurant to show the pass-through charge on an itemized receipt. As stated previously, currently, the pass-through cost does not apply to restaurants and other prepared food providers. The exemption for small retailers, farmers markets, and holiday fairs was removed in the engrossed proposal, which would require these businesses to show the pass-through cost on an itemized receipt. One question to answer is should any businesses receive an exemption to charge a pass-through fee or to show it on an itemized receipt? If 4-mil bags are considered reusable, a minimum fee for reusable bags, such as 10 cents, may need to be established if it is determined that retailers should be distrib, should not be distributing thick plastic bags at checkout for free. In conclusion, staff recommendation is to advance the ordinance to second reading. If enacted, the city may seek to partner with interested groups to provide broad community outreach and education, as this has been successful in other cities with similar ordinances. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll have some public comment at this point. Ken Pies, Ken?
My name is Ken Closer. I'm the fellow who just recently adopted, well, within the last year and a half, adopted the Pringle Creek, the Mill Race, and the Sheldon Ditch. I'm the founder of what's called the Creek Walk Project, and water quality and public work, some working with hand-in-hand, and you may see a little bit more about it. We consider ourselves stewards of rain to river. So that's watershed, and what happens between the Willamette River and the watershed. These stewards are where their citizens walk the banks of the creeks in Salem. So it's the water and the banks that the Creek Walk Project is really all about, with a keen eye focused on health of those creeks. And at this moment, I would, anybody seen the Yellow Ducky around? Raise your hand if you saw the Yellow Ducky around. This is our mascot. His name is the Honorable Virgil Pringle Ducky. And if you get one of these, you have just been duckied. Okay, the primary pollutant that I find and I see along the numerous, around the creeks and the numerous plastic bags that end up in the creeks and on their banks, thus reducing the water quality throughout Salem, thus, reduce, yes, okay. That's three. That's four bags. That's five bags. That's six bags. That's seven bags. That's eight bags. That's nine bags. That's 10 bags. Do you really see what even one bag does out there in the wilderness? And I'll be glad to recycle these too. When we pick up the trash along the way, they go into these bags, and it all gets recycled. The average family brings home 60, six times this, okay? 60 times this in four visits to a grocery store. Four visits. I always ask for paper bags, and they go, oh, what for? Oh, we don't even have them. I believe that single-use or carryout plastic bags should be banned, no question, or require that the bags should be identified as to the business that uses them, and they should be required to remove any of their bags that end up as trash in creeks in Salem. Salem just went through a drinking water crisis, scare, and fear. The rest of the world already experiences this stuff. What more do we need to convince you to quit polluting our water?
Can your time out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ken? Yeah, Jim?
Thanks for coming down. It looked like the bags that you just showed us were all very, very similar, all the same bag.
Grocery.
Right, but they're all, but they're all basically the same thickness, the same kind of bag.
Right.
Do you ever?
These are the ones that blow away in the wind, and you can't touch them.
Okay, right. Do you ever run into the larger plastic bags, the thicker plastic bags?
Yes, we do. Even after the city cleanup has happened in the parks. Bush Park is one area, Pringle Park's the other one, and Riverfront Park's the other area, where the adoption of creeks in this town, there's 64 named creeks in Salem, three of them are adopted. Guess by who? Ta-da! Every single creek should be adopted by the local residents or people who are interested in that. You probably sit down and have a barbecue with your neighbors next to your local creek anyway. I want people to be aware of their creeks and participate with their creeks. For me, this started with arthritis in the chair. I'm 66 years old, 22 years of arthritis from my neck to the middle of my back. Ta-da! That's about all I can do, but I did have to get off my sorry butt in the middle of winter, when I'm seeing, as well you have seen also, pollution around the world. We've got to get rid of plastic. We've got to get rid of plastic. Go fishing, you're going to find more plastic to fish.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Hope to see you one time or other. If you find a ducky, let me know.
Linda Walmart.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and Councilors. My name is Linda Walmart, and I'm a resident of Ward 3, and I am here today on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon, which is the local chapter of the International Grassroots Climate Change Advocacy Group, 350.org. And I'm here in support of the proposed plastic bag ban. 350 Salem appreciates the work that the city staff has done to consider public input and to draft an improved ordinance. We support the suggested changes, and we also wish to thank Counselor Anderson for the proposal and the other councilors who have supported this ordinance. So, my own set of numbers here, just to repeat why a plastic bag ban is an important step both for our community and the world. They last too long. They last 500 to 1,000 years for a bag that will be used, on average, for 12 minutes. There are too many of them. Americans use about 100 billion, yes, billion with a B, plastic bags a year, close to one bag per American per day, and they cause environmental problems, as we've heard, unsightly litter, waterway pollution, and ocean contamination, and they also contribute to heat-producing greenhouse gas emissions, since they're largely produced from fracked gas. So Salem should join the over 120 states, counties, and municipalities, including eight Oregon cities that have banned or taxed carryout plastic bags. So it's time to kick that bag-a-day habit.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Any questions? All righty. Thank you. Christine Meyer?
My name is Christie Meyer. I live at 1355 Elser Drive in southeast, and I am very much in support of this. And last time I came, I also expressed my support of this. I moved here from Boulder. Boulder is a city that enacted an ordinance of such, and I was very proud of that. And I myself stopped using plastic bags in 2015. At this point, I figure I've not used over 10,000 bags just in my family. That is no small change. I've been, I'm an avid recycler, and I'm also an environmental studies major from Boulder, from CU Boulder. So I studied this. I've seen the numbers, and I, it's convincing. And someone asked me not too long ago, we were talking about plastic, and they said, where do these, where do these come from? How do they end up in our water? And it surprised me, but so many people don't understand what happens, and they, it's simple. They sit out in the sun, they photodegrade, they break down into little tiny pieces. They get smaller and smaller and smaller, and they work their way through the soil into every drain, every storm drain, every river stream. It's everywhere. It's in every single column of the ocean. The columns are divided by their density, by temperature. It's everywhere. It's in every fish. It's in our food. They eat this. If you imagine, this is our air, and if we're in an environment that's dirty and full of particulate, we're breathing that, we're processing it, those chemicals stay in our body. Water is the air for fish. They're breathing that, they're ingesting it, it's staying in their bodies, it's intoxicating them, and it's passing to the other animals that eat these as well. It's such a cascade event. And it is a small thing, it's a plastic bag, but it's important, and every person needs to stand up as a steward to do one small thing. Because I do remember, as I said last time, a time when we thought plastic, when paper bags were the way, and people did not want to change, and here we are, and we realize we've made a mistake. Let's undo it. Let's start over. Excuse me. Let's go back to how it was.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselor Lewis?
Thanks for coming down. I'm curious, if you were in Boulder when the ordinance went into effect, did it stop any kind of plastic bags? Or did the, did the stores go to the thicker, larger plastic bags?
It did stop. I think, the one thing I will say openly is I think that Boulder did one thing wrong. And I think the one thing they did wrong is that they charged for the bags, and they only held grocers liable to this. It did not extend to other retail businesses. They couldn't get them on board. It was a small change, but it wasn't enough, and they really need to, as he's shown us, it's every thickness. The light ones are what they did to cut back on product. Those are the worst. They break down really fast. The heavier ones get drug, and they get buried, and they stay for a very, very long time. So I think they did it wrong. It did reduce it, and myself, I noticed a lot more people avidly bringing bags. In fact, you go to places in Boulder, and you walk out with a plastic bag, you get the look. You get the Boulder look. You know, what are you doing? And in fact, someone will come up and say, what are you doing? Have one of my bags. Who's this? They're in my car, they're everywhere. So it's easy, it's an easy transition.
Okay. Thank you very much. John Amundson?
You have been officially dropped. Thank you very much.
Mayor Bennett, city councilors, my name is John Amundson, and I'm a fellow with Environment Oregon, a statewide, citizen-funded environmental advocacy organization with tens of thousands of members across the state, including thousands here in Salem. And I'm here today to express Environment Oregon's full support for a ban on plastic carryout bags in our state capitol, because we believe that nothing we use for 10 minutes should be allowed to pollute our environment for hundreds of years. And I apologize if some of these numbers are repetitive, but I think they serve to illustrate the gravity of the situation. Every day, Americans throw away an estimated 300 million single-use plastic bags. Unfortunately, however, less than 5% of these bags are ever recycled, so bags are one of the most common single-use plastics found in our environment. And to make matters worse, plastic bags don't biodegrade, and they thus persist in our environment for hundreds of years. In addition, we've known for decades that plastic pollution is harming our wildlife. Scientists have found plastic fragments in literally hundreds of different species, including 86% of all sea turtle species, 44% of all sea bird species, and 43% of all marine mammal species. Ingesting these fragments is often fatal for wildlife. When animals ingest plastic waste, it can block their digestive tracts, and they starve as a result. We can do better. We have to reduce the amount of plastic we use, and single-use plastic bags are a good place to start. Eight other cities in Oregon and the entire state of California have banned single-use plastic bags, preventing hundreds of millions of bags from ending up in our waterways, our oceans, and other parts of our natural environment. Salem should join this effort to put wildlife over waste and ban plastic carryout bags. Thank you for your time and for considering this important issue.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Jennifer Johns?
The problem of meeting readers and being able to look at you, it's that part of my life, it's rough. So my name's Jennifer Johns. I live at 390 Candelaria Boulevard, and I am also a teacher. I teach general biology, marine biology, and marine environmental systems. And I'm so pleased to have had these people who have come before me, come before me, because frankly, I feel like my job here is done. Not that I was any of their teachers, they've all done their own learning. But what I did do as a teacher is prepare a handout, and I'm not sure I'm allowed to distribute it to you all, but am I? Thank you. So they're coming around. So, as you'll see from this handout, much of what's been said already, I would want to reiterate, but rather than say it all again, I'm going to point out the couple things that are different. The first figure that you'll see when you look at this handout is the increase in production of plastics since the 1950s. And I know these are small, because I wanted to put them all on one page to save paper. But what I want you to notice is that darkest pink category there, that dark pink category is the amount of single-use plastics, the increase in the number of single-use plastics. Yeah, you'll have to share also, in effort to save paper. Okay, so you see that the number, the amount of plastics, of single-use plastics, has gone up dramatically since 1950. The second figure points to the idea that in beach cleanups, and again, I teach marine environmental systems, so my students and I were just at Ny Beach last week doing a beach cleanup, and we also collected sand, which I'll tell you about in a sec. So you see as the fourth-most abundant item collected from beaches is plastic bags. Now, the story doesn't end there. You see, the next figure talks about, oh my, how long until it's gone, and so the plastic there lasts a very long time. And what we've learned from this woman from Colorado, I think, is that the plastic turns into microplastic, and so you see that in the fourth figure. And the fifth figure shows you how something like a mussel, that's a filter feeder, would take that plastic into its system. And the last figure then shows you how that mussel might be eaten by some other creature, or you might eat the mussel, or when those other creatures eat the mussel, that plastic is bio-magnified throughout the food chain. And so ultimately, that plastic bag that you took home from the grocery store and discarded after 10 minutes becomes a part of you, and so that probably is not what you're looking for. And so it is my hope, along with the rest of these folks, that you will support the ordinance at hand.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You're done. And we really appreciate you showing up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Could you speak to the effect of different thicknesses, if you have anything else that you would like to add in addition? I know the person from Boulder spoke about it, but the effect on the environment as far as bioaccumulation with the thicker versus the thinner plastics, if that's a discussion that people are having?
Surely. So the thickness of the plastic would certainly matter in the time that it would take to degrade. And you're all aware that plastics don't biodegrade, they just break down into smaller and smaller bits. And so the thicker the plastic, the longer it lasts, I think would be the easiest way to sum that up, as an intact plastic. And then it will eventually, though, like all plastics, break down into smaller bits. The plastics, when they're small bits, we find them everywhere, and that was the point about the sand. So we collected the sand, we looked it under the microscope, there's plenty of plastic in Oregon beaches. And so I would argue that even the thicker bags are not responsible to ourselves or to to ourselves or to the environment. And so it's not just, a thicker plastic bag will be more likely to also cause the problems that you typically see pictures of. So if you see an animal entangled in plastic or you see an animal that's ingested plastic and therefore doesn't have room for real food in its stomach, a thicker plastic is more likely to cause that type of problem for longer. Eventually, it'll degrade though and become a microplastic and then could bioaccumulate. There being a difference between ingestion and bioaccumulation. Does that make sense to you?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Lewis?
I was just in, earlier this month in Palm Springs, in the grocery stores. They're used bags with all kinds of literature on them, including these can be reused 250 times.
The thicker grade plastic?
The thicker grade plastic, yeah.
It's a possibility. I mean, I don't know that particular figure, but I would say, I would ask you, how many people are actually reusing that plastic bag 250 times? And how many are treating it like the thinner millimeter plastic bags? So that to me would be the essential question. I mean, I can also reuse my Ziploc bags if I want a number of times. And you can reuse those shopping bags, but they'll tear pretty quickly. So the thicker bag possibly might be reused, but I think most people treat them like disposable bags.
Thank you. Beverly and/or John Cochran?
Hello. I'm Beverly Cochran. And I was here last time and spoke. And I'm glad to hear a lot of this because I'm learning too. But I'm against it. I want the paper bags to be used. And I don't want to have the plastics not be used because we use it for a lot of things. You know, and other people I know use, you know, you bring your groceries home in this supposedly one-time use. We use it for a lot of things, to put it in the garbage can. I don't know how people put garbage in cans if there's not a plastic to hold some of this. Yeah, bones and, you know, flies can get all around. It's nasty. But, and I'm also concerned about charging everybody for these bags. You know, it's not fair. I mean, I feel for the people that are real poor. But they're on some system to get, they don't have to pay, but we have to pay like 10 cents for a bag. I think that's very unfair.
And it's not like, it's not as if they were modeling deposits because you don't get the deposit back on the paper bag. The other thing is, talking about pollution, have you seen paper mills lately? They produce quite a bit of pollution themselves. So that's another concern. We do believe that there will be creative ways to recycle those plastics. There are successful recycling plans already available for plastic pots that they plant in. And I'm sure that some enterprising person can find a way to repurpose the plastic and not put it in the waste stream.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all. I have signed up. No, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'm kidding. Here's another person. And then why don't you get in line here and we'll...
My name's Nathan LaMoss.
Could you say it again?
My name is Nathan LaMoss. I live at 1694 Broadway Street in Salem. And I'm opposed to this ban on bags. I don't think we need to be the ninth city to go ahead and impose it. I'm basically, there's a number of purposes we can use the bags for. One is to take the product out as a customer service to the customer that the people, the businesses get. If a business chooses to go ahead and go outside of that, I think that that's fine. That's the prerogative. I think it's out of the, I don't think that the city council needs to be judging particular companies, how they go ahead and use their bags, if they choose to have a service that way or if they choose not to. I'm also happy the people that go ahead and decide that they want to have these, you know, to reuse their own bags or to use other alternatives, I think that's great. I think that's also, I applaud anybody who wants to go ahead and pick up the garbage out of the streams and the streets and that kind of stuff, like the lady last time we were here. And she saw a paper bag, picked it up. I think that's people's responsibility to do that. I don't think it's the place for the city council to go ahead and impose their particular direction on the rest of the community. And there's a lot of people that aren't here tonight, primarily because they, not because they don't, they're maybe not concerned, but they just don't know. And I see a lot of the people that have been here, they've been the ones that have, you know, that they've opposed or they've been for the ban. I want to say that I'm opposed to this particular ban because I think it is not a direction that we need to go. And I guess it's primarily my take.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Nancy?
Nan Baker-Crawf, 676 Catalina Northeast in your ward, Kara. I'm a master recycler and a teacher. I would like to say that the city has gotten involved in things before. They tell us about what we can do in our homes for code enforcement on lots of other issues. This is not something new that the city can step into. I have been using reusable bags since, you remember the old canvas white ones from Safeway? Yours are starting to break down, look pretty bad if you have them that long. I'm excited that our city is going to take this step. I lived in Olympia part-time as a teacher for two years. They've been doing this for a number of years. Even if you go to the hardware store, any kind of store, you become more conscious of what you're using. It becomes natural. I go to Value Village. They have already started. They began having large-size customer reusable bags months ago. Just completely cleared out their plastic inventory. I'm very proud of them. I'm excited that Ross has already testified at our last hearing. And also, at a previous hearing, we had master recyclers at Garton explain how badly the plastic bag messes up the equipment in our proposed recycling that we do do of other materials. And I want to encourage each and one of you, whatever your reasons are for not voting for this, rethink it. Please let Salem make this step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, my name, my name's Alan Pennington. I live at 350 13th Street Northeast. A lot of you know me because I work for Marion County as a waste reduction coordinator, but I'm here as a private citizen. I'm not representing Marion County. I just want to make that clear. Lot of great testimony tonight. I just, Nancy was just talking about the master recycler program. I know that there's at least two city councilors sitting out there that went through the program. Yeah, good on you. And so I just took a group out to Garton Services this, we do a field trip, part of our program. And we saw the mountain of all the recyclables there. And you should have seen all the plastic bags. There was a lot of them out there. And it's important to realize that this is an organization, it's a nonprofit. Everybody's recyclables coming from your front, from your yard or your house is going to Garton Services. And they have a real problem with the plastic bags. It's an economic issue for them because they spend a couple of hours, I was quoted, two hours a day, cutting plastic bags off of their belts. So that's an issue for them. I mean, that's a lot of time. But another thing that was not mentioned today was, there was a little bit of talk about the amount of money to be charged. I saw a nickel. People are banding around dimes. I think, it's my take is that the more businesses that are covered in this, the better because of the issue of both contamination and both in the recycling industry and the stream there are in the landscape. But also, as expensive as you can make it to be, to cost people because there are reusable items. Particularly with plastic bags, they're cheap to give away. I'm sure the grocery stores would appreciate it if there was a higher fee for that because if we go to more paper bags, those are, those cost them a lot more money. And we always see it, we see these costs passed on. There is a charge, by the way. There is a charge in your, it's all built into your final price for your items that you buy there. But when we look back at, say, the bottle bill, originally it was a nickel. And that was pretty successful, but over time that dropped because a nickel just ain't worth what a nickel used to be. And so when they, the rate, when the rate dropped below 70% and went down to 69% in 2016, when they jumped it up to a dime, it boosted it by 10%. So suddenly that dime was much more attractive for getting their deposit. And I think it would also be that much more of a repellent should somebody want to avoid that cost. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Leslie? Are we making these signup sheets available?
Oh, no, I wasn't planning on testifying.
You just moved to come down?
Hi, just, my name is Leslie Paulson. I live at 930 Garnet Street. In my previous life, I did work in the garbage dump and I picked up, I cannot tell you the number of hours of plastic bags that we pulled out of the loaders that blew around the disposal site. It's unbelievable, the amount of waste that comes from these plastic bags and the headache and the problems. It gets caught into everything. So yes, there's some reuse for it, but the vast majority of Salem citizens do not reuse them. And they are a major, major, major headache for anybody in the garbage industry. You will see them in their trucks. You will see them flying around the streets. You will see them everywhere. And then on a windy day, they are all over the place. So whatever you think about plastic bags is ask somebody that works with your garbage and ask them how they deal with it. And ask them, do they want to see this and spend most of their time? Because it costs the garbage industry thousands and thousands of dollars just keeping the sites pretty so that you can enjoy them.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Anderson, does this belong to you?
It does, but I think we might have some questions of staff.
Oh, do you?
Well, I don't, but Counselor Lewis's hand is going up.
I didn't see anybody looking.
I might have questions depending on Counselor Lewis's questions.
Okay, well, reopen the hearing. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just have one question. In fact, I meant to get with city manager's powers, but when I was in Palm Springs, which has a bag ban, I brought back four examples of the larger, heavier plastic bags. One I mentioned earlier has a claim that it can be reused 250 times. I only reused it twice because I was only there for a few days. But I, it's my understanding that those larger, heavier plastic bags are banned in this ordinance.
Yes. Those would not be allowed in the current ordinance.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Counselor Cook?
Thank you. Hi, Callie, how you doing? I have a question about enforcement with this particular ordinance, the way that it's written. Would this be something that would be enforced through billing? The way that it's set up through the budget? Would, how would things work there?
So current, in the current ordinance, enforcement would happen through code compliance.
Is there a way for businesses that are already accommodating this? If a business doesn't offer plastic bags, they've already decided, you know, we want to move, we're being proactive, we see this change coming. And they already have a system set up. They're still going to have to charge their patrons for the paper even though there's no other option or they're not currently charging within their business model. There's no added expense. Is that right?
Yes, you're correct. They would be, they would also have to charge the five cent pass-through cost on a paper bag.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
I do have some questions regarding the restaurants. Right now, their restaurants are excluded. The question I have is, let's say I go to a place that has takeout food, a Thai place, and I order some pho. And I don't finish it. Yeah, they put it in, they put it in a, you know, a plastic container. And then it's normally put in the plastic bag because that's hot and it's food and for the same sort of reasons that meat could go on a plastic bag in a restaurant. And then sometimes the restaurant might put the plastic bag in a plastic bag or sometimes they put the plastic bag in a paper bag. So let's say we were to include restaurants in this. Would there still be the exception for, I don't know, public health, safety in terms of the contents of some of the food that one might take home or not?
Well, it can really be drafted any way council chooses. I mean, it would be up to council on how that policy decision moved forward. But you could, I think it would be difficult to exclude, include some types of food and exclude others. I think that would be difficult administratively.
Essentially, in restaurants, everything you take home is going to be food. And as it stands now, that's a plastic bag, correct?
Yes. Restaurants are still allowed to provide.
And is the exemption for restaurants due to the nature of the material that's being placed in the plastic bag? Or is it due to some other reason, just like, let's not, let's not include restaurants for whatever reason?
So the reason that restaurants are still allowed to provide plastic carryout bags is to protect from cross-contamination and also protect from the food maybe spilling and getting on a car or other items, contamination.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm going to now close the public hearing again. Okay. Counselor Andrews?
Thank you. I move the City Council and Gross Ordinance Bill Number 2018 restricting use of plastic carryout bags and advance the ordinance to a second reading for enactment.
Second by Kaser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to say because we've sort of discussed this before, but I do want to thank Counselor Kaser for her motion the last time we heard this to postpone and to have the staff go out for outreach and to have the staff have individual discussions with the councilors. I appreciate that very much. And I'm glad she did it. And I think it's come up with a much better ordinance because of that. And I think we ought to advance this and move it forward.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for bringing this motion forward as well with some of the amendments. I do have some concerns though with especially the enforcement arm. So in complete support of the hazards of plastic and the persistence in which it stays in the environment and breaks down and has this hazard, I keep thinking about what is really going to happen? How is the enforcement arm going to work on this? And how is it going to be any different than self-enforcement? And in talking with staff today about this issue, what really kind of rang alarm bells is, well, if we end up having plastic and paper or how is it that was put, when you charge for the plastic, everyone uses the paper because it's free. So you have to charge for both. Or you have to get rid of the plastic and then charge for paper. But there are some businesses that have already moved away from plastic, that have already limited the consumption themselves. And in this case, we would be, we would be taking businesses that are moving in the right direction, individuals that are saying, hey, we're reducing plastic, we recognize the impact, and we're putting them in a situation where they would have a pass-through fee or where they would have these other options. And while that may be the exception to the rule, I think it's the reason why the McMinnville ordinance had these certain exceptions. And I would just want to make sure, I know we had code up here for code appreciation. I want to remind council, we had one code compliance officer at one point that was responsible for all of the multifamily use inspections for our city. We've added another code compliance officer for that. It's my understanding that, I mean, code compliance does phenomenal work. It's my understanding that, I mean, code compliance does phenomenal work, but I would just caution us that we're able to really mean it if we're passing it, that it's not just an ordinance without teeth, and that we're able to have an efficient mechanism to do so. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson?
This is sort of in response to Counselor Cook. I agree with many of those points, but it's also sort of in response of the other issues that people have raised, that is, let's make it a dime, let's do something else. And I guess my response is, the perfect is the enemy of the good. And we're trying to do something here, let's get it on the books, let's see how it works, and just like, I think it was Mr. Pennington who said it used to be a nickel on the glass, and now it's a dime on the glass, and that had some effect, let's see what happens. And maybe, and, you know, some future council might say, let's move it up to a dime, but let's do something else, but let's get it on the books now and see all the good it will do for the people of Salem. Thanks. And the environment around, et cetera, et cetera, what everybody said.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's see the nays. Louis Ninkie McCoyd, nay. Motion passes. You want a break? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to go first. I was not here at the last meeting. I have not, yeah, well, yes, I'm sure you did, and I didn't, I did not hear any of the testimony, I did not read the original staff report, I did not watch it on CCTV, so on the advice, I realize I had something else better to do than city council, I know that's hard to understand, but.
This stuff's on tape, you can watch it over and over again.
I guess it's mea culpa here, but on the advice of the city attorney, I am removing myself from decision here, and I will leave the building until somebody comes out and gets me.
Okay, thank you, counselor, appreciate that. Okay, you want to go ahead, Olivia?
Good evening, I'm Olivia Glance, and the case manager for this case. It's a continued hearing for a subdivision and urban growth boundary declaration case. I'd like to enter the additional staff report, the attachments to this presentation into the record. Just as a reminder, the property is 4.82 acres located north of Boone Road, approximately a quarter mile east of commercial. The proposed subdivision did provide a connection to Brewster Avenue to the east and a stub street to the vacant property to the north. The application was originally denied due to lack of access to the undeveloped property to the east. Staff did meet with the applicant and suggest a removal of the westerly connection to Boone Road that would meet the intent of the code. The applicant did not agree with staff's suggestion. Therefore, staff brought forward an approval with conditions for a connection to the easterly property, which the applicant showed that was feasible. The application was also denied in part due to lack of parking. Staff's report does provide conditions of approval that would meet this decision criteria. The subject property is shown in blue, it is outside the urban service area, therefore the urban growth preliminary declaration permit is required. The property is currently not served by parks. The parks master plan, which is in our comprehensive plan, is shown, and the service area is shown in gray. The comprehensive plan and the parks master plan can only be amended by legislative action by city council. Staff recommends amending the planning administrator's decision and approving the application with the adopted findings in your staff report in all conditions of approval. And I'm available for any questions.
Mark Grins, you're signed up. Did you want to testify?
I just wanted to announce first that I also wasn't at the last meeting, so I was just advised that I should also not vote as well, so I'll just.
You're going to leave the building, too?
I don't think I'm going to leave.
I don't know where Tom went.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, you're welcome to stay, we appreciate your presence, thank you. Mark, do you want to go ahead?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mark Grins, I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast, and we represent the applicant in this continued public hearing before you this evening. I'm going to try not to take up very much time, but I did want to kind of review a little bit, so we were pleased that we did meet with staff, and we did talk about the project, and staff did inform us that they were going to come back with a recommendation for approval with the condition for the stub street, which is where we were at the other night. And I just, so that you get a perspective of the two different situations that we presented before, and the fact that the property, the property that's not part of this application that's adjacent is only like 350 feet deep, that we talked about the different directions of travel that people would take out of here, and the fact that there was just about 440 feet of extra travel is all that there is by this, by not having this street connection in place there. We did, we did learn, staff talked about the fact that the TSP was the guiding document that talked about reference to cul-de-sacs in here, and so we did, we did do some review of our own in that respect, and we, and about street spacing, and we learned that there are, there is criteria in the, in the design standards that talks, in development code that talks about spacing for streets, and there is also an exception to where this in a way that where strict application of the space requirements may not be necessary when there isn't really a particular benefit from that extra street, for the extra connection in the street network, which we've talked about, we don't, we're not sure that we see, that we see the benefit, the benefit for that. Staff also talked about the TSP restricting the use of cul-de-sacs, and it does recommend to minimize them. But we did also notice that there's standards in the TSP for length, that limits the lengths of cul-de-sacs, and we also noted that in the development code, there's, there are specific development standards still that exist about cul-de-sacs. So the code itself hasn't been changed to provide any wording that says that cul-de-sacs are not allowed, or that they're, they're to be limited in use, or that the purpose for cul-de-sac is other than, than what we would envision that easterly piece to be able to take advantage of. And so we, there are standards, but one of the things that we would, we propose, and we talked to staff a little bit about it, but we didn't, we didn't get staff to come forward with that as a, as an outright condition, is that, is that condition 10, that staff has recommended be replaced with a condition that would provide for a pedestrian connection between lots 16 and 17 in this area here, rather than have the stub street. Because as we noted to you, there's a significant expense associated with that street to both properties, and there, and for what little bit of benefit that we can see from the, from the, the street connection itself for out-of-direction travel. If you remember, we pointed out where people, where, at least where we could determine that people would go, and the, really, the only thing that people are going to want to go to the north for is to get to the park, which, by the way, by staff report, is not a park that services our area today. But that's the only thing we can see, and we, so we felt that the pedestrian, the pedestrian connection would achieve that result and facilitate that, that access to the park, knowing that at some point in time, that you're going to, you're going to amend the parks master plan and add this to the service area for the Hillfriker Park, because that's what the Hillfriker Park master plan that you all adopted a couple months ago, or a few months ago, is all about. So, we have no objection to the conditions that staff has put forth for the approval of the subdivision, with our suggestion that condition 10 be modified to have it be a pedestrian path instead of a street. I will express to you about the UGA and the park requirement, that it's difficult to rationalize why my client is going to have to pay a TFAA when it's clear by that council's action that this property is going to be serviced by the Hillfriker Park. But that said, I understand that there may not be a way around that at this point in time, but it is, it is difficult to understand and rationalize that to our client. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of us.
Any questions? Counsel Lewis?
Yeah, I, just one question, and see if this bites at all. One reason to have that connection street is so I can live in that neighborhood and I don't have to go on Boone Road. And as it gets busier and busier, wouldn't that be more logical to have that option for folks that live there?
Well, that, I suppose, although Boone is a local street, and where would you go? That you don't go back out on Boone? I don't see where you're going to, where you're going to go.
Well, speaking from somebody who lives in West Salem and doesn't want to go on Wallace, you go through the neighborhoods.
Well, that's, you do that because Wallace Road is an arterial, it's very busy. But this is a local street, so, and it's just, and it's a right turn, right turn, I mean, that's all it is, so.
Okay, any further questions? I don't have anyone else, thank you very much, Ms. Grins. I don't have anyone else signed up, do you have any, oh, sorry, do you have a question for staff?
I have a question for staff.
Yeah. Olivia, do you want to?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear, I guess, so what, what is proposed to amend the planning administrator's decision is to have that street connecting, creating, creating a street that would stub into that undeveloped parcel, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then for the urban growth area declaration that was approved, what the applicant was talking about as far as having to provide park facilities, is that, that's something that we require of all subdivisions, is that?
That's something we require for all subdivisions outside of the USA. So, the slide I had that showed the property in blue, it showed that the property is outside of our urban service area.
Okay, so if something was in the USA?
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't need that permit.
Okay, so that's just following the, what's in our code already?
Or just following the code.
Yep, okay, thanks.
Okay, Counsel Cook?
I just have a question about the cul-de-sacs, and in relation to the TSP. It was brought up that connectivity is the preferred mode with the TSP, and that we like to limit use of cul-de-sacs, but at the previous session, it was observed that on the entire south side of Boone, it's all cul-de-sacs because they're close to Kubler. Could you explain the difference and why this, how that affected the decision?
So, those three cul-de-sacs were, they're limited in width because of Boone Road, so there was not, there was no means, they're not, they're not even really that long, right? So they're literally just a bulb, there was no means for them to make a connection. They could have addressed the criteria in Chapter 803 that says you have to serve undeveloped properties by the exceptions, in that section that say that there is a physical constraint, they, I'm assuming they would have addressed that decision criteria to show that they had a physical constraint to be able to not serve undeveloped properties if one of them was not developed next to it. This property, this, there's an undeveloped property next to the subject property, and that's what staff is applying, is the code.
Thank you.
Another thing as well, Counselor Cook, Norman Wright, Community Development Director, there's a distinction to be, to be made between the TSP, the Transportation Systems Plan, and our development standards. The TSP is a guiding document, our development standards are the rules for development. So, whereas the TSP says that this would be preferred to see connectivity, our regulations actually require it. And the reason they require it, practically speaking, is for the same reason that we require multiple exits for a building, multiple ways to access or to exit a property, and for that very reason. While the TSP is certainly an important guiding document, the regulations themselves have a stronger emphasis here on actually requiring this and thus putting effectively a burden of proof to try to define some other way, alternative findings to satisfy this, which we have not gotten.
Thank you, Director Wright, for that clarification. And as far as where the requirements and the desire sort of rubber meets the road, it was brought up in the last council session, the concern about cut-through traffic, speeding, and we know the status of Boone as a road in general, I guess this might be maybe directed more towards Director Fernandez, but I'm looking at how that point of connectivity would affect traffic flow, or traffic speeding in the area, and other options for residents as well with the concerns that were addressed in the previous council.
Solely being a planner here, I'll touch a little bit of this, and I would certainly defer to Director Fernandez for the rest, there may be instances of cut-through traffic, or another way to consider it is, over time, there may be ways in which this infills and becomes more of a grid street, urbanized, to support the higher volumes that you would see for this area, the same way that you would see in the rest of the city at large, where we have a more developed street network. So, cut-through traffic, one might say today, later on, one might say that it's more part of a diverse street network for an urban environment. So, with that said, I hope, I hope that rhymes with what Director Fernandez may be thinking.
Okay. Apparently, he's with.
One more question, so this one, I think, is for Director Fernandez. It was mentioned in the report that there are sections on Boone where the sidewalk is missing that are not included in development, that would be possible with council approval. Could you elaborate those on that section? Or, I don't know if that's more appropriate for Olivia?
Yeah, so if there's a deferral, once there are, council can call up a deferral at any time, we have council call up deferrals typically when there's other road construction going on. If sidewalks are set, you know, what we don't want is, is a sidewalk in space, but if other sidewalks are set, or if this, if this area, this development is required to put in the sidewalk along Boone, then if there's missing pieces that can then connect, then yeah, we would want to come back and have the council call that up, and the sidewalk's installed. I'm not sure where that piece is, but, but if there's a deferral, it can always be, it could absolutely be called up.
And does the status of that deferral change given the cul-de-sac scenario versus the connector scenario? No? Okay.
No, the, yeah, I mean, if it's a deferral on Boone Road?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, the property next to where they're showing the cul-de-sac now is, there's a single-family home, and there's a missing chunk, there'll be a missing chunk of sidewalk between that and the church, which installed sidewalk. The deferral only allows council to call it up as recorded, and it's something that you can do?
Sure, once there's, yeah, once, once that's the last, I mean, you can call it up at any, council can call it up at any time, so it could be called up now, but if, once that's the last of the missing pieces, then certainly, that would be the time to call it up and have them installed.
And so, just to be clear, if we called it up now, that whole section, the red and the green, would have sidewalks on that side?
No.
No, okay. Good point of clarification.
No, so if you, if you look at your map, there's one, one more section in front of an apartment that we were unable to find a deferral for, so at this point, there would, there's not that means there.
Anyone else? Counsel, I'm going to close the hearing then. Counselor Nink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move this deck recommendation to amend with a modification to condition number 10 to replace the stub street with a shared-use path stub.
Second by McCoyd.
Then just, yeah, just to speak to that, minimal benefit of a, of an interconnection at the cost of removing two dwelling units from our inventory, the number of trips that would actually utilize that would be minimal, the existing development pattern in that neighborhood is it's. that would be minimal. The existing development pattern in that neighborhood is it's loaded with cul-de-sacs. I actually love the terminology for the ones across the street, which were actually coined as skin tags, rather than a cul-de-sac, because they're hardly a street at all. It's more just like a bulb off of Boone Road. I know the person, I won't pull them out. But the benefits would still be there in the transportation system for bicycle goods and pedestrians, and again, the benefit to the transportation for vehicular traffic would be minimal for the cost.
Okay. Further discussion? I'll, oh, Counselor Kazer?
I'll just say, I'm not going to support the motion because it's not following our code. And, you know, looking at the size of these lots, and I don't have the map in front of me of what staff was proposing, but I think there was the loss of, I think it was one lot, but if the developer actually made these lots smaller, you could get some of that benefit back. I mean, I live in a neighborhood where lots are 50 by 100. I mean, that's what it is. We don't live on quarter-acre lots in North Salem, so I'm just, I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Opposed, Hoy, Cook, Kazer. Motion passes. Okay. We're at information reports. Any discussion on these? Anyone want to discuss these? Okay. We'll move to ordinances. Want to go ahead?
Ordinance Bill Number 2118, an ordinance relating to public nuisance, amending SRC 98.140, 98.150, 160, 170, 190, 98.200, and 98.210, and creating new provisions.
What do you want to do, Counselor Hoy? You want to move this?
Well, one of you.
Sure.
Okay.
I move staff recommendation.
Second by Nanki. Okay.
Would you like to say something?
You can say something. We can turn it over to the chief right now.
I'm very excited to see this proposal, and I appreciate the staff's work and the chief's work on bringing it forward. This is a direct response to a lot of concerns we have and council's urging, and I very much appreciate the work on this.
Counselor Nanki?
Will this affect a certain property?
It's possible.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, why don't we find out? Counselor Kazer?
I just want to add, we had a property recently in my neighborhood that we could have totally used this ordinance because we were under that 30-day, you have to have three complaints within 30 days, and it was like, you know, five days after 30 days. And anyways, so I appreciate this coming forward.
Yeah, this is long, long desire, and I'm really glad, thank you, chief, for bringing this to us. Could you talk about this a little bit?
Yes, Jury Moore, Chief of Police. We've had this nuisance ordinance for many, many years, and in fact, I think we utilize it in a different way than actually coming to council on many occasions where we have the ability to declare or let someone know we're going to declare a property a public nuisance, and they, in most cases, abate the issue because they don't want to face the ramifications if they don't. I think Counselor Kazer said it very well. There's been many times that we don't have the three offenses that qualify in a 30-day period, and this certainly widens that reach where we have the ability to do that. And I think it very much allows us to better take care of the community on longstanding nuisance locations. And then, if I could, I appreciate your, thanks for my bringing this forward, but I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that Brady Rogers and Deputy Chief Miller and Mark in Legal did the omen's work on this.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Skip Brady, everybody involved. We're all, this one, we've really been wanting to see, so glad to see it. Okay, any discussion further? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. That's it. Okay, then we are adjourned.